This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. This is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we are conducting this monthly meeting on go to meetings.com on Tuesday, February 16th, 2020. The quorum for this meeting is three, and I will now call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Christina, I don't have her, but she should be here later. William Boyd is absent. He notified us myself. I'm the Commissioner of Zone Three. Dan Sem.
Zone Four, present.
John Staley.
John Staley, present.
And standing in as an alternate tonight is Debbie Holton Lamberty. Present? Well, she's here. Her chair is empty. So essentially, we do have a quorum then tonight. Please note also, everybody, that Sandra Zalik, who was our other alternate, turned in her resignation this week because of her personal life and her busyness. If you see her, speak to her, please thank her for her service. We also welcome Susmita, our Town Planner, and Aileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. Please identify yourself as my name and title. Christina's now here.
Hi. Christina, I'm sorry, there's somebody's.
I think Debbie is talking.
Yes, Debbie.
Yeah, we need to mute Debbie.
Oh, okay, okay. Christina Kazanis is present, Zone One Commissioner.
Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's Executive Order Number 7B point 1.3, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair during both administrative and our petition sections tonight. With that said, I hereby call to order this monthly session of Stanford Planning. All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? None? It's unanimous. Afterwards, we will now proceed to, excuse me, we will now proceed to our public hearing. And tonight, on our schedule is, let's see, let me get my other piece of paper now. We are now entering into our Planning Commission Public Hearing section. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Be it noted for the record that Debbie Holton Lamberty, alternate member of the Planning Commission, is sitting in place of Mr. William Boyd, regular member. Before calling for the first petition, I would like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us, that is, the policy of the Commission to have questions of the petitioner directed through the Chairman. The Chair reserves the right to rule on cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. You may also want to share standard procedures to follow during online meetings at this point, which I already just went through. I wish to announce that should any item on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may include, may conclude at 10:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any new item not heard by 10:00 PM tonight will be held at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning webpage and in the Town Clerk's office in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 7H1 of IJ. I will now advise the Town Planner to read the first petition and discuss her staff report briefly. Susmita?
If, if everybody else can mute their microphones, it will be helpful to the others to hear the conversation. I just want to make a correction regarding the Governor's Executive Order for public notices. It is 7B dot one dot three. I'm now going to give you an overview of the petition. The petition is for the subdivision of 740 Honey Spot Road property in Stratford. This is a point four five acre lot. And let me just mute everyone except me. Can you hear me now? Okay. The petition is for 740 Honey Spot Road subdivision application. The lot size is point four five acres and the petitioner's name is Daytona Partners, Connecticut LLC. The petitioner is requesting re-subdivision of the subject property to create two lots of 11,614 square feet and 8,377 square feet respectively. Proposed Lot A, this is Lot A, 260 Stag Street, consists of warehouse. And Lot B, which is 740 Honey Spot Road, consists of the motor vehicle repair facility. Lot A has no issues of concern in terms of environmental issues. Lot B is where there are several environmental issues and the petitioner is seeking this re-subdivision so that they could go ahead and remediate this property, which has a motor vehicle facility. The petitioner first applied for the subdivision last September, actually, last September, we were supposed to hold this meeting and it got continued after the staff report was issued. In the meantime, in the past few months, they met with me and the town engineer a couple of times to go over the staff comments. And based on the town engineer's comments that were given at that time, they took care of several issues that were listed in his comments. And now, after these discussions, the town engineer favorably supported this proposal because, you know, the, there were so many issues that were resolved, such as, you know, the curb cut widths and the proposed width of the commercial driveway and meeting the MS4 standard requirements. So I'm going to read out a few of the comments of town engineer dated February 1st, 2021. The town engineer confirmed that there are two separate sewer connections that exist from buildings to the street. The developer proposes an easement at the corner to accommodate handicap ramp construction. Based on this, the town engineer mentioned that no street line adjustment and monumentation is required. Easement document should be submitted to the town attorney for review. The proposed 30-foot wide commercial driveway on Honey Spot Road is acceptable per the town ordinance. The location would be subjected to a future development plan. The proposed site redevelopment per MS4 standards, which is the municipal stormwater standards, should take into account half inch of rainfall storage on site in order to disconnect the directly connected impervious area by the town's MS4 goals. And the petitioner also agreed to post a sidewalk bond in the amount of $25,000 so that the sidewalks are implemented after the proposed remediation takes place, after the lots are subdivided and the redevelopment takes place. So I, I also reviewed the zoning standards and looks like last year in May, they received a bunch of waivers for the site. So based on those waivers from BCA that were approved, they are now consistent with the zoning standards. Regarding the consistency with the plan of conservation and development, I believe that certain, I mean, based on what we have visually seen, and we can safely say that certain onsite and offsite improvements must be made. This is also in accordance with several policies in our POCD, which are as follows: Preservation and Enhancement of Stratford's Quality of Life; Enhancement of the Community's Sustainability and Lessening of Its Carbon Footprint; Diversification of the Transportation System; Protection of Natural Resources, Conservation Areas and Environmentally Sensitive Areas; Enhancement of the Visual Appeal of the Community; and Growth with Little Impact to the Town's Infrastructure. And our POCD also mandates that all new development should manage stormwater on-site and make efforts to reduce runoff. So based on the POCD guidelines, the findings are as follows. The first one is that any development on the newly created lots should be required to conform with the MS4 permit impervious area goal so that there's no net increase in stormwater runoff. It should take into account at least half inch rainfall storage, as recommended by the town engineer. Independent sewer connections for the newly created lots must be pursued. The town engineer has confirmed these, and I'm assuming that, you know, the engineer is also aware of this by now, after reviewing the staff report. Town engineer's comments regarding implementation of handicap ramp must be followed. The developer proposed an easement for this, and this document should be submitted to the town attorney for review. Existing site conditions must be improved by cleaning up excess vegetation, removing excess parking, and installing the proposed street trees. A new fence that meets current zoning standards should be installed. Building permit is required for existing buildings prior to the filing of the final plat. A sidewalk bond in the amount of $25,000 should be posted. This bond will be released upon the implementation of sidewalks on the redevelopment site. I also want to reiterate what the building official had said in his comments. He said that once the lots are subdivided, the buildings should have two separate fire access. So they have to file for a building permit with the building department. And regarding the excess parking on the side of Honey Spot Road, our zoning enforcement officer, John Rosatsky, he spoke to the owner of that motor vehicle repair facility twice in the past few months, asking him to remove the excess parking. And the owner has agreed to do so both times. And, you know, it's just a matter of time when they would, I think, be cleared from that sidewalk on Honey Spot Road side. So here's a brief overview that I gave you, and if you have any questions, Mr. Chairman, you can ask me right now. I'm going to unmute everyone.
I, I think we are moving from here to the presentations, correct?
Yes. You may want to ask the petitioner to make his case at this point.
Yeah, that's what, that's where, where, where I was going. I do have questions, but I'm going to hold those until our next legislative session. Is the petitioner or representative present? Please announce your name and address. For the record, petitioner submitted their notices to adjacent property owners twice, once on August 26, 2020, and again on February 2nd, 2021. Tonight, I know that we have Diane Lord speaking for the property owner. We also have Chris, and I didn't get your last name, who is speaking from an engineering point of view.
Chris DeAngelo.
Last name for the record, DeAngelo.
Go ahead, Chris.
I think Attorney Lord will start the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening.
You have the floor, Diane.
Diane Lord of Willington, Willington, DC, 1000 Bridgeport Avenue in Shelton. We are representing Daytona Partners LLC for the properties. Both the properties were known as 260 Stag and 740 Honey Spot Road. My client acquired these properties back in July of 2018. The properties are located in your MA light industrial zoning district. As Susmita has indicated, we're here to subdivide the properties. And again, as she has indicated, it's quite, it's kind of a unique situation. The, the Honey Spot Road property, which contains the motor vehicle repair facility, is the property that is in need of remediation. The 260 Stag Street, which contains the warehouse, which remains, you know, well-built and functional, is being used, and there are no issues with this property. The, my client had engaged the services of Chris Copley, who's a licensed environmental professional, has been for over 37 years and does a lot of work in the state of Connecticut, especially as part of Fairfield County. A Phase One and a Phase Two study was done on both these properties, and what was discovered that was that Lot A, the warehouse property, is not contaminated. Lot B, however, is, and so that is a, that is why that we, we need to separate them because they can be remediated separately. The, as you know, there is currently a tenant at the Honey Spot property road. The lease that he has had has expired now, almost a month tenant, and obviously, with, you know, if assuming we get your approval, we are going to have to ask him to leave so we can commence our remediation. There is a plan in place with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We will have to demolish that existing building, clean the site, and then, once that's all cleaned up, we can rebuild to suit for a, hopefully, more appropriate light industrial use that won't, that won't be as unsightly as what is existing there. So the need to subdivide this property is directly related to the remediation because we, if it's all one property, it's considered an establishment under Connecticut law, which means we couldn't get a mortgage for any of it. If we separate them, they can get a mortgage on the Stag Street property, use the funds to remediate the Honey Spot property. As Susmita indicated earlier, we went to the zoning board of appeals back in May, and they granted a few variances in order to permit these to be two separate lots. The Stag Street lot meets all the current zoning requirements. The Honey Spot was on the small side, a little smaller, but that was granted by the ZBA so that we could move forward. You have our proposed map that is on the screenshot there. Susmita very well summed up and kind of made my case for me, thank you, with regard to the town engineer's report and the fact that we have met with them on a couple of occasions and completed the request that the town engineer made to his satisfaction. To that end, you also have a street improvement plan that was submitted, which shows where the proposed sidewalks would be, the entrances, the fence, and the street trees that, that we would be putting in after the property is completed. That said, as Susmita did sum up, that we meet the requirements for the subdivision. They were not creating any new streets or anything like that, and we do comply with the town plan with respect to that. So basically, Chris and I are both here to answer any questions you may have, or we firmly believe this is in the best interest for the town, so that we can get this property remediated, and in the best interest of the neighborhood to clear up the rather unsightly use and all the vehicles and, you know, the new fence and everything that needs to be done to make the Honey Spot Road property look fitting for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Is that, are you done, are you complete?
Yes, I have concluded.
And Chris, did you want to make any comments, or you're just here to answer questions?
Hi, I'm just here to answer questions. Susmita noted that we had a lot of back and forth with, with John Casey, your town engineer, mostly regarding how to treat the perimeter, you know, outside the property. We're not doing anything to the site within the property lines. It's all just the, the public right of way. We added sidewalks or street trees. We submitted a separate landscape planting plan, so all in an effort to make the corner look much more aesthetically pleasing. So happy to answer any questions if you, if you're not familiar with the plan, but you should have it, you know, on file, was submitted a few weeks ago.
If that is your presentation, I will now open the floor up to questions from our board members. So raise your hand. John, you want to start us off? Wait, John, you're muted. Susmita, can you unmute?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Now he's here.
Thank you.
All right, Chair. The, I'm confused, and I'm looking at all these maps and all these prints and renderings and S2, and I see A and B reversed. Something wrong with what I'm looking at? The warehouse seems to be on Stag and the remed, and the auto plant on Honey Spot, the repair garage.
Diane Lord, that is correct. The Stag Street. Warehouse and the Honey Spot property is the garage. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the, the auto repair company is on Honey Spot Road, and the warehouse is on Stag Street.
Correct, John.
Okay, well, because a lot of the documentation says reverse.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I knew.
You're, you're right. That, that error replicated itself, and it was only corrected as of today, I believe, or within the last couple of days.
Okay, so other than that, I just wanted to get my bearings, that's all. And I will come back. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Diane, you seem to be leaning forward. I mean, Debbie?
No, I'm just listening.
Christina? Nothing? Daniel? I think Daniel, Susmita is muted.
All right.
No, he's not.
Oh.
He's not muted. I think he needs to connect his microphone.
Might be frozen.
Well, it says, actually, he's here.
Dan's frozen.
He might be frozen. He is frozen.
Wait, he's materializing. Wait a minute.
So.
I will go back to John while we hope, hopefully, Dan, we're not giving up on you, but right now, Dan, you're frozen. Go ahead, John.
So, um, thank you. So Lot A and B are reversed. So we're looking at, I understood in previous documentation that the Honey Spot Road motor vehicle repair company was going to be torn down, that building.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Have we gotten, have we gotten Daniel back?
Can you hear me?
I hear you barely. Try again.
How about now, is that better?
Better.
Yeah.
No, I think the only thing I wanted to say was, I think we all can agree that that property's been in ice store for years. And looking at the plans, I'm in, you know, I, I look these over and I'm satisfied with some of the changes that are being made. I think, I think my, my only question is the automotive piece right now. Is that, you mentioned that you had to speak to them twice about removing the cars from that parking area? Is it going to be an issue with getting them off the property based on where we are with COVID right now and, and evicting a tenant?
Diane Lord, for the petition, pro eviction. Residential facility, we are now commencing an eviction. And they, as I said earlier, they're on a month-to-month lease, so.
Reverbating.
An eviction at any time. In addition, my client has also sent a few letters to them with regard to the parking of the cars on Honey Spot Road and, you know, to stop parking the cars there.
Yes.
I, I think Diane is on phone as well as on computer. That's why she's echoing. Maybe she.
Yeah.
Take off one and then, or mute one so she can speak in the other one.
I am only on my computer, sorry.
Yeah, we, we couldn't hear you clearly, Diane, what you said just now.
Diane, can you either turn up your volume or lean your microphone closer?
Okay. Looks like you have metal matches at the usual.
I think it's better now. Yeah, you could try speaking.
Possibly.
Okay, so Diane Lord, what I just indicated earlier was that, in response to the eviction, that the Governor's orders apply to residential evictions, they do not apply to commercial evictions. They are month-to-month tenant, and we are able to evict them.
Thank you, Diane.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please ask Diane to type in the chat window so we can keep it as short as many minutes? Because it was still not clear what she said just now to me. I don't know if the others were able to follow.
I could not hear.
I am hearing garbled. I'm not hearing everything, so.
Because everybody, everybody's got a name there.
Are you able to get any of this?
Inaudible is the correct term.
Inaudible. Thank you.
Inaudible.
Hi. This is Aileen Marsh. I got that Attorney Lord was saying that the Governor's executive orders for evictions do not apply to commercial properties. Thank you.
Have I heard from everybody, Christina? I'm going to come back to you.
I'm fine.
You're still nothing?
Nope.
So then, I guess I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and then we can close out the Commissioner's questions, and afterwards, we'll open it to public if we have any public here. I don't see any names, but actually, I do see one name, so we will find out. I'm looking at the town's planning and zoning PDF that they had prepared on February 4th. My question, and I, and anybody who knows me knows that I always bring it up, is the M4 requirements, the MS4 requirements, and the findings that were in later, in both in those, both consistency with our plan of conservation and development, and the findings that followed along at the end of that document, both of which mention the, the MS4 requirements. It's something that is problematic for Stratford that we really are trying to focus on, and it's also something that's problematic for the property as it, as it, as, because it is in a flood zone. So both of those are concerned. You, the developer has, Diane, Diane Lord has, I, I'm assuming that you guys are saying that as you redevelop this property, you will take care of those issues. In our, in my previous documents, I had no information that the property was being developed, and it looks like those plans are much more solidified than any of the documentation that we've had before us. So I am actually happy to hear that because it was one of the things that I felt like was almost a dead end for us. But what I'm most interested in is if we need to put any stipulations. I'm going to ask a question of Susmita, hopefully that she will know. Do you know specifically what ZBA had put in as conditions?
ZBA was only for waivers of zoning standards, and they got all the waivers that they Um, ZBA was only for waivers of zoning standards and they got all the waivers that they requested. In terms of wherever they did not meet the setback requirements.
Okay.
Like lot B is having zero setback on one side. They did not have any stipulations and municipal stormwater permit goals. Because the town doesn't have stormwater regulations that are adopted, we cannot officially require them to do anything, or we can only recommend them based on the town engineer's comments that they would contain half-inch rainfall storage on site, like the town engineer recommended in his comments.
Well, yes, and, and the P O C D's stating clearly, the town will acquire all new develop, will require all new developed managers, man, all new developments to manage stormwater on site and make efforts to reduce runoff. That is not our mandate. That is the state's mandate to us. So I'm concerned about that, given that it's in a, an area that floods already. I, I, I just don't want to see us, um, signing off too easily on, on that. I will ask a question of Chris, who seems to probably have a background in this. I know that we are covered, the property right now is going up, one of the properties is going up to 97% impervious covering. And if it were, um, if part of that lot was simply gravelled, it would be impervious and we could bring that back down to 80%. So I just don't want to give up on that instantly in terms of the goals of what Stratford's looking, looking for. So that's the only thing that I would think in terms of any conditions that we might consider putting on this. Maybe, Chris or Diane, you could speak to that?
Diane Lord, for the petitioner, if I may, it is certainly our understanding that once we have demolished this building and the property has been remediated, that whatever proposed development that will go on this property has to come back before the, um, well, we're going to have to have a site plan and we're going to have to be able to get building permits, et cetera, so we're going to have to meet the standards that are required for creating perfect area there and losing some of, you know, the fact that it's all currently impervious.
Diane, thank you. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear. So I, I'm, I've actually, you've settled most of my, most of my questions with that single statement. The other question was a firewall between the two properties, but if you're tearing one of them down, that becomes mute. It's no longer a question. So I, I think I feel okay with what we're doing here. Anybody else have any final questions from the commissioners? Yes, John? I think you're muted.
I'm muted. Chairman Watson?
Nope, you're okay. Go.
The, um, you know, I'm not sure if I should be presenting these questions to the commission or right now. I have.
Well, we are going to have a discussion later. It's only if it's something that you want to try to get an answer from, from, from the party.
Okay, well, the building is going to be taken down, correct?
Correct.
And, and the, um, and, and in reading the materials with the state of Connecticut and DEP and so forth, I see that there's been, gradient movement toward the southwest property, which would be the warehouse property on Stag Street from the Honey Spot Road property. Am I correct?
I, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that. It was my understanding that the Stag Street property was in good shape and not contaminated.
Okay, well, in my, my, my life and what I've done in my life, I see that that's not the case. Uh, adjacent properties are affected, absolutely.
The phase one and phase two, as I said, done by, um, Chris Copley of Advanced Environmental Redevelopment has indicated that the remediation needs to be done on the seven, on the 740 Honey Spot Road property, which is why we wanted to separate them.
Have you done any probing and testing on down gradient properties?
I believe Mr. Copley has. I don't have any test results with regard to that, but if he did a phase two, he would have had to have done that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any of our commissioners have any other questions? So I'm going to move forward then. I will next be asking questions of the public to comment in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor, in favor or in opposition to the petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition of? Please raise your hand or let us hear you if you're only on, if you're only on phone. I see there is Joe. Joe, you are muted. I, I don't know if you're listening to us. Okay, how do I proceed if we can't get through this person who is on his phone?
Harold, you might want to ask if somebody would like to speak in opposition because you asked for support.
I did.
You asked for people to speak in support and next you would ask, right?
Okay, if anyone who wishes in opposition to, to the petition of? Is there anyone who is neither in favor of or in opposition, but who wishes to provide comments on the petition of? Three options. We're being very flexible here. I don't see any other names on our list with the exception of Joe. But his mic is muted.
He may just be listening.
Oh. I'm going to try to unmute him. Yeah.
You did.
Joe, are you there? Are you there by phone only?
Mr. Chairman, you could also ask him to type in the chat window if he wants to.
Joe, if you're able to, could you type in it, in it, comment on the chat window? Huh? Hello? Joe?
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like nobody wants to speak.
Yeah, I, 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 okay, so I'm going to move forward then. Hearing none, I will now put, I will now request a motion in order to close. John, motions that we close are, are, uh.
Christina Kazanis, make a motion to close the public comment session?
And, well, John already did, so you can second.
Oh, I thought, oh, I didn't hear him. Sorry. All right, I'm closed. I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded by that the public here on the petition of 740 Honey Spot Road subdivision be closed. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 three, four.
Aye.
So it's four. I think. Yes, four in favor. Let's see, motion, motion in order to recess to the administrative session. Anybody?
Yes, John Staley. John Staley, I move that we make a favorable motion to move toward our regular monthly meeting. Thank you.
Anybody second that?
Christina Kazanis second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's moving all over the place.
Christina, yes. John, yes, so we have four. Daniel, we started seeing Daniel, so, all right. Motion and seconded by commission members.
Thank you for your presentation, Diane and Chris.
Excuse me?
I just thanked them, our presenters.
Sorry, I'm being very rude. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do better. Diane Lord and Chris, thank you very much. You did a great job. And Sir Smitha, thank you for reading the town report because that also helped us a lot. So we are now in our, we are now entering into our administrative session. Let me pull my agenda for that.
Mr. Town?
Okay, so we are now going to tonight's agenda. The first thing on our agenda is that we need to have someone do a motion to accept last month's meeting minutes. I don't, Aileen, I don't have the, I don't have the date of it.
It's January 19th.
Oh, it's two, so I'm going to need two separate ones. One is January 19th, 2021. Will someone please give me a motion for that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting for January 19th, 2021.
Someone second it, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next one, I need something for the regular motion meeting minutes.
Um, Christina Kazanis said like to make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes for the meeting on January 19th, 2021.
Second, anybody? John, it's up to you. John? All in favor?
John, it's our show tonight.
All in favor? Anybody opposed? All right, we're okay. We're now going to move through our agenda, which if anybody looked at the agenda, it is very slim. I am going to put the.
Excuse me. There was a slight change in order of business that should have happened in the administrative session. You should have reopened the petition discussion among the commissioners to vote on the item.
Well, I was going to do that right now.
Oh, okay, all right.
I, I was going to do that where our normal public administration, uh, public, our comment on administrative issues comes up. So we're now going into doing our, and you're on the record, guys, into doing our discussion of how we are going to, uh, this, the, what we are going to do with the, uh, the petition that we just saw. So let's first have a little discussion. Would anybody like to make any comments? What I'm looking for is, um, do we need to send this with any kind of comments? What they're looking for is, um, well, let's see.
Who are they?
Uh, we're talking about the, the people on the Honey Spot Stag Daytona, Daytona partners.
Commissioner Watson, did you, you have to, did you move the item off the table?
No.
Uh, you should move it off the table to open for the discussion. It was tabled at the time of public hearing.
Okay, anybody want to move this off the table?
Motion to move this off the table.
Someone second it? Debbie, you haven't done anything.
Yeah.
Seconding? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right, so now we can discuss it legally. Basically, we're looking for, from us, is a subdivided petition, as explained in, by both our town planner and by the, um, by the, uh, developers. We are, if we follow what the planning does, they essentially are agreeing to this because essentially the developer is going to have to come back in for a new building permit. And at that point, current building permit requirements will be, current lot requirements will fall into effect. Well, I think that actually removes almost everything that we really need to add as a possible rejoinder. The only thing we can say is that it was very clear that the town engineer had talked about that any new development needs to conform to MS4 standards and that the bond of 25,000 for sidewalks and trees needs to be carried forward. But my assumption is, and I'm going to stop and ask, uh, Smitha this question. Will those carry through no matter what we say, Sir Smitha? Did we lose her?
No, I'm here, yes. Um, so you're asking about the conditions?
Yeah, do we need to add those from our point of view?
Yes, if you are voting on the item, you could repeat, I could read that in the record, that you are voting with the following conditions. And I would read the conditions out loud for the record before you take the vote.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest if everybody, I don't know if you have it in front of you, look at Sir Smitha's planning zoning findings that she gave us earlier, earlier today, and there are six items that if you include those as conditions, seven items, sorry. If you include those as conditions, then we can simply add those as conditions. Most of them have been agreed to or in the discussions have, have already taken place or will become automatic once that property is torn down and the remediation is completed. Yes, Sir Smitha?
Commissioner Watson, I also put it on the screen for all of you to read the findings. You can see it on your screens, those seven conditions that I stated in my staff report.
Do you want to, you want a moment to read them, guys? Do you want me to stop and let you just try to read them?
If you want to read, me to read them out loud, I can do that as well for the public who are listening in.
Do you mind?
Yes. My findings are as follows. If the proposed subdivision is approved, the following conditions should be met to enhance the visual appeal of the area, improve pedestrian connectivity in this area and promote sustainable development. Number one, any development on the newly created lots should be required to conform with the MS4 permit impervious area goals so that there is no net increase in stormwater runoff. It should take into account half-inch rainfall storage on site as specified by the town engineer. Number two, independent sewer connections for the newly created lots must be pursued. They seem to already exist as confirmed by the town engineer. Number three, town engineer's comments regarding implementation of handicap ramps must be followed. The developer proposed agreement for this and this document should be submitted to the town attorney for review. Number four, existing site condition must be improved by cleaning up excess vegetation, removing its parking and installing the proposed street trees. Number five, a new fence that meets current zoning standards should be installed. Number six, building permit is required for existing buildings prior to the filing of the final plan. Number seven, a sidewalk bond in an amount of $25,000 should be posted. This bond will be released to help implementation of sidewalks on the redevelopment site. I also wanted to let you know how the process works, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, one more time?
John, can you, can you mute yourself?
I also wanted to let you know that once this gets approved with conditions, when the petitioner is ready to bring the plans for signature and at. when the petitioner is ready to bring the plans for signature and address to file with the town clerk, we give them a conditional approval, provided they fulfill these requirements. And, you know, the final subdivision plat is not recorded until all the requirements are met.
So are we, are we creating an undue burden on them by having them do this before the remediation of the property, or are you, or is that a requirement before?
Well, the remediation is a different issue. This is subdivision request that we have, the town commission is hearing here. And you're rightfully justified in stating that you're approving the subdivision with the conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that clear to everybody, Christina?
Yes. Yep.
Debbie?
Yep. Yep.
John? Daniel, are you back? Okay.
Mr. Staley wants to talk, I guess, and he's muted, Chairman. I'm gonna unmute him.
Okay, John? I think you're muted, John.
Yep.
Now you're back. Talk.
Down below, John. It's at the bottom.
When we want him muted, he's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be nice.
Oh.
There we go.
We got you. Don't touch anything.
I forgot. I forgot. So what was the question, Chairman Watson?
Uh, I was just asking if there's anything else that we need to cover. But John, while I have you here, before you get, before you mute yourself, you had raised an environmental issue, and I actually did research into both properties a little bit with the state. And some of that research, something, this property goes back to 1992 with DEP interest.
Correct.
And, I mean, it's, it's a long-term prop, property.
It was only a one-year remediation.
Plumes travel, but we also have to base it on what the state says in terms of what the pollution level is. So right now, the state is saying that that second property is not highly polluted, it's that it's not-
I haven't, I haven't seen anything to that effect, Chairman.
I read that in a DEP finding when we first got a piece of this paper over a year ago, I think. So all I'm saying is that,
I've had a lot of experience with downgrading contamination.
Excuse me?
I've had a lot of experience with downgrading contamination. And I didn't, I asked if they probed anything to, I think it was Diane Lord, was it?
Yes, yes.
And she didn't know, but the property is downgrading. Were they probed and tested? It moves. It might not be there, but it might be across the street.
I, I hear you, and I don't disagree with you. I lived in a neighborhood that, we had exactly that problem.
Very concerned, because then downgrading goes to the, to our shore.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
But the property owner cannot change that fact. It's the DEP that has to do it.
Well, the DEP, I mean, you want me to vote on approving a subdivision with all this external problems out there? And I don't feel comfortable doing that. I don't have enough information. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Christina?
No, I still don't have anything to say, other than I, I'm in, I, I mean, I know we're not voting right now, but I just don't have any problems with this.
Okay.
You know me, I usually have a problem with everything.
Yeah, and I, I made a copy of the findings and read them, and I don't have any problem including those in the record.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, I think then we are, we are ready to vote if, if that's the case. Would anybody, currently, right now, I'm suggesting that someone make a motion to include these seven points. I don't know, John, how to add in the point to make you happy on this. You can think of a-
It's not about making me happy. It's, it's, it's the neighborhood in Stratford.
No, I, I, I understand. I, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just blow off your comment, because it's a valid comment.
Well, no, they've been doing this since 1960, repairs and oil, tanks in the ground. There's, the ZBA voted to approve all the non-conformance. I just, I'm a little confused on what's going, with the whole process.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If you're planning on including any more, more conditions in this subdivision approval, please consult with the town attorney, just to make sure it is legal. He's here with us today, which is to our advantage. I think you should make use of that.
Sir Smitha, can I add, may I ask John a question that maybe he can answer?
Yeah, John is our town attorney. You can ask him anything.
Is there any way we could, I don't wanna put an undue burden on the property owner on this, but if we're doing remediation, my assumption is that the DEP on the one property, on the garage property, the DEP is gonna come back in after, at some point and say, you've remediated this property, correct? That's not, that's not out of the norm. I'm sure they're gonna want that, so that they end up with decent insurance. Could we simply add a stipulation that they include the property next door in their final sign-off?
I don't, based on what I see here, there's no indication that there's contamination on, on Site A or Lot A. So rather than add that as a condition here, I think you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman. That, this is really a DEP issue. And they are going to be the final determinator of whether the property has been remediated sufficiently. So I don't think that you should clutter up an approval with conditions by adding conditions for which there does not appear to be any objective evidence that's been presented.
Okay, thank you. That, that I, I kinda, we're in the same situation. Listen, I, I've, I fought Connecticut DEP for 10 years when I lived in New York. So they're, they're adversaries when they wanna be. They know how to fight, but, so I'm gonna say that unless someone wants to bring another motion, I'm gonna ask someone to give me a motion for these seven points. And, John, you and I need to have a discussion more about what we can do, and maybe we need to talk to DEP about planning and our reaction to our brownfields. What can we do that, what can we do different? Maybe we need to educate the town in a better way. Is there anybody who would be willing to do that?
To do what?
To what? To make a motion to add these two, these seven points as conditional point, conditional approval points?
No.
To what? I, I'm trying to figure out what the-
Findings.
I'm happy to make the motion, I'm just trying to figure out the language.
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion would be to approve the application with the seven conditions that are listed in Sir Smitha's report.
Aileen, did you get that?
Okay, so one of us has to make-
Does that sound okay to everybody?
One of us has to make that motion?
Yes, you don't have to give, you can just say the seven points as listed in the-
Okay, I make a motion to approve the petition with the seven points listed in the town planner's report.
I'll second Dan's.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a first and a second. Okay. Accept, right? We have to say, all in favor, accepting it?
All in favor, aye.
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 No.
Two, three, four, and one, four in favor and one opposed.
Hey, John Staley.
Correct.
Then I think we've done that, correct? I, I believe so. John, I really, I, I want us to have this discussion in more detail at some point. We gotta have to find a way, because I am really in absolute agreement with you. I just don't wanna, I, I felt like these people have been working on this project for a year and a half, and essentially some good will come out of it for Stratford that I really think we, one, one more ugly building will be torn in. So, Sir Smitha, will you please send an email to the parties and let them know what we arrived at?
Uh, yes, I will be issuing a decision letter to them. And also, I will put it in the record for the minutes for next month. Aileen is already taking notes of it.
Okay. Uh, then I have nothing else on our agenda with the exception of our last, next-to-last comment, which are members' comments and concerns. I just wanna make one comment. This past week-
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Aileen Marsh, reporting secretary. I'm actually on the agenda under other items. If you wanted to mention the March 6 Land Use Academy Training and the Sikorsky Airport article in the Connecticut Post dated Sunday, January 24th, 2020.
We shall mention both of those. I ended up being,
Thank you.
Mr. Fry was at our last meeting. I was unaware of that, but, so I ended up being quoted by him accurately, but nonetheless. I also went to, Christina, were you at that resiliency meeting, the MetroCog meeting?
Well, yeah, it got rescheduled because of the snowstorm, and I couldn't make it because of the reschedule, so I didn't get to-
It was so good, and the owner, I mean, the owner, the manager of Sikorsky was there. And her comments were, like, I was like, oh, come play on my team, because her comments were night and day different than anything you would have expected from her. And she actually, it's the only time I've seen a public official admit that she needed to be educated on, on issues. She actually made the comment that I was so unaware, she said, I assumed that we were in a floodplain. I assumed that we were in FEMA land, but she said, I have no understanding of its impact on the area around Sikorsky. So, and it, taken for what it's worth, I was really amazed that she would say that. In any case, it was excellent, and it is going to be, but MetroCog is working on, they're not really, they're not doing it. They're helping to implement it. It's being designed by Yukon through Clear, what is the name of the organization, Sir Smitha?
Land Use Academy Training.
No, 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 the-
Yep, March 6th.
No, no, the, I'm, I'm, the-
Connecticut Resilience, Resilience, Connecticut.
Connecticut Resilience, and the two, the two tools that they've developed to, to show you on an individual property of how resilient it is to storms, and how resilient it is to flooding. So we now have a new tool that, at some point, I hope will get implemented into our zoning. Right now, all it's doing is telling you where to look for dangerous property. But it does include social, it does include brownfields, it includes a whole list of items that we don't normally put all together. So if you get an email for, for the next version of this, the next version is going to be specifically on, on wind damage and, I forget exactly, coastal wind damage, which should actually be interesting. Try to, try to sign up for it, because I found it to be a great, great, three-hour and Stratford was there in force. So MetroCog was very happy with the turnout from Stratford. So in any case, what else did we not cover?
Uh, the Connecticut Post article.
Any comments on the Connecticut Post article?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Dan.
Well, I think I was the one that sparked this up. I sent out an email after I read it. After I read the, after I read the article in the paper. And what I was amazed about was the whole article did not mention anything about Stratford in there. It was all about Bridgeport, and I was just overly concerned about, not misinformation, but the lack of information from anybody within Stratford that this reporter didn't go out and seek any information on the impact it would have on Stratford itself. So I just felt that was important for all of us to, to read.
Yeah.
I agree.
It kinda goes back to the, the point we were all making when we were talking about this the last time. It's like, you know, Sikorsky exists in, you know, this magical land where Stratford doesn't exist. And, you know, it, it just, like, we're not even in the same universe. It's bizarre.
Yeah.
Yes, Sir Smitha?
Commissioner Watson, there is a correction to the minutes of last month's meeting that I just remembered that we had to make a correction. After your discussion with this, if we can just amend those minutes and approve them, that would be great.
Okay, we'll do that before we adjourn, but this is a member concern. So we can just stop here, unless anybody else has anything to say. There was mention of, before we go to your, what you were saying, Sir Smitha, there also was an article about, Dan, I think you were in that, the article about the, the property on River Road. And the area that is our wildlife area that's owned by Stratford, and how little the developer values the, values the property. I just thought, I just think that, when examined next to Sikorsky, says to Stratford that we really should be very mindful of protecting what are the assets of Stratford. We need to do a better job of that, because not all people are going to pay any attention to what we think is important. Now, let's go to Sir Smitha. Sir Smitha, we need to make an amendment to last month's minutes?
Yes.
You explain it?
For the section, section eight dash 24 review on Van Bursk, Burskirk Avenue. We said that a portion of the lot should be, you know, given away to 65 Wood Avenue instead of 91 Wood Avenue in our minutes, and that has to be corrected. Aileen can give you the exact language if she has with her. Do you have the exact language? If you do not, it's fine. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I, if you're really speaking, we-
And we just agree that it's really, it was really only a, a number. I, I assume the result is really important, because someone's gonna piece a property that's been-
It's the land being signed, Wood Avenue parcels, and the commission was deliberating that, you know, if that was not dedicated to one, one of those parcels, then it has to be given away to 65 Wood Avenue instead of 91 Wood Avenue, and that's the correction that has to be made.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
John Florrick, the correct way to do that, you've already voted to approve the minute, so really, there should be a motion to reconsider that vote a second.
And do an amendment to it.
And then, when it's reconsidered, then you, then come out with a new motion which corrects it.
And those were the minutes of, of February 2nd?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yeah, and those were the minutes from January 19th.
January what?
19th.
19th.
19th, okay. So we need a motion to reopen those minutes, someone?
I'll move. Dan Stamps is on board.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Alright, so now we are going to open up the minutes. Correct, John?
Yeah, so you've, you've now made a motion to reconsider it. Yes, so you've, you've now made a motion to reconsider it. And now, in your reconsideration, you'll state the motion correctly. So, Susmita, with the right property address numbers, if you will.
And Mr. Chairman, I have the meeting minutes on the screen. I can share my screen with you. I pulled it up from the town website. These are our Jan 19th minutes, and it said in this over here that try to sell the area behind 91 Wood Avenue to the owners of 65 Wood Avenue. And if they're uninterested in acquiring it, add to the 91 Wood Avenue property. And I, I think it should be try to sell the area behind 65 Wood Avenue.
Okay, so we want to change the first 91.
Yeah, and...
That's in section A. We want to change the first 91 to 65, correct?
Yes.
And that's all we need to do then?
So I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect this change for the minutes of January 19th.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed? So unanimous. So I think we, that's, we did that. That's enough, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. We are now down to adjournment. If no one else has any business they want to bring up? Thank you, guys, for the hard work tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Debbie, yes? Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
Someone second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nope. Have a good weekend.
Bye, everybody.